Test.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the monthly meeting of the Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to a seven-ten on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Killers, could you lead us in one? Everyone please stand.
My dearest United States of America, to the Republic, to its fans, my nation, our God, with his role, with his justice role.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Louise to share the reentry plan presentation.
Okay, good evening. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, our presentation tonight will provide the specifics for our reentry plan uh for school for September. School districts across Long Island, the state and the country again have been working hard to prepare for the reopening of schools once again. I don't think uh in June, we thought we would be in the position that we are, but unfortunately circumstances have once again warranted that we institute um certain protocols in order to keep our students and our faculty and our school community safe. As you may be aware, we were informed in early August that the New York State Department of Health would not be providing reopening guidance for schools for this year. We were advised that school districts should develop reopening plans that align with guidance issued for schools by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And in addition, we did receive following several weeks when we, I guess the state realized there would be nothing forthcoming from the Department of Health, uh guidance from the New York State Education Department, which mirrored the CDC guidance. We understand that this process, the waiting and the lack of clarity on a few items has caused some stress for everyone, to say the least. We understand how you feel, how parents feel, the Board of Education, um it's a very, very important issue. Um, and we were frustrated as well. We were hoping for clarity, um we were hoping that we would receive guidance in the way that we did last year so that there would be uniformity in school districts approach so that communities could uh really be at ease and understand that um the decisions were being made by a higher authority. Um, however, with that said, I can sincerely say that once again, we have done our best to develop a plan within the guidelines um that have been issued and stay within the limitations of our building configurations, our staffing, and import as important within our budget. Some of you may be wondering about the results of the survey which we sent out last week. Um, the board was desirous of knowing how our community felt specifically with regard to masks. The masks we know are a hot button item. Um, we don't, they get a day that doesn't go by without some conversation about um whether or not districts are going to wear masks. Should we go back to masking in supermarkets and restaurants and the like? Um, and until yesterday, uh, we did not know what that position would be because New York State hadn't taken a formal position, or I would say a mandate on it. But to share with you the results of our survey because um you did participate and we appreciate the time that people took. We appreciate the comments, they were all read. Um, and um, given the fact that a mask mandate we expect is going to be issued, as was indicated by the governor yesterday, um, the decision is taken out of our hands, but the results are as followed. We received five hundred and seventy-three responses from families, which is a huge um rate of participation. Um, and the results were as follows. Sixty-four percent of respondents were in favor of masks and thirty-six percent were in favor, were not in favor of a mask mandate, so they were in favor of making masks optional. As you are aware, as I just said, the decision was taken out of our hands as the new governor yesterday directed the Department of Health to issue a universal mask requirement. And you will hear more about that in the presentation, so we will get started. So I want to welcome everyone back and once again, thank every administrator, faculty member, staff member for all of their extraordinary efforts last year in keeping our schools open and safe and our children learning as well. I think we really need to get a big pat on the back for every single person in our community, our students, most of all, who were able to learn under the conditions that they did. Uh, our administrators, our faculty, our staff, um, our Board of Education for their support and our parents for their support and understanding. Um, we really do appreciate it and we um, we hope that we can have a united um approach going forward and continue to do the best job that we can to make sure that everyone comes to school healthy and stays healthy. And most importantly, stays in school. Planning for the reopening of school, so our number one priority, as I think you know, for reopening is the overall health, safety and well-being of everyone in our school community. Um, it's our goal to ensure that everyone is in the safest environment possible and that school closures and the need to quarantine individuals are minimized. We heard loud and clear from parents that they didn't want their kids to quarantine. Um, these were, there were guidelines that we had to follow based on New York State and the Nassau County Department of Health that when students came in uh a certain degree of contact, it was six feet um for a certain amount of time, they had to be quarantined, we didn't have a choice. And unfortunately, some students did have to stay out a number of days and luckily they did not get the virus and that was the good news. The bad news is that healthy kids did have to stay home. So I'll tell you more about that as we move forward, but um the CDC has relaxed those guidelines and the Nassau County Department of Health will be accepting those guidelines for uh quarantining, which means that we hopefully will in a minimal level need to quarantine students and they will be able to be back and stay in school. The guiding principle that we used for all of the decisions that we made was that students belong in school every single day. Um, as you will see in the plan, everything really is built around that. Um, getting kids in school, getting them back uh away from remote learning and keeping them here so that they don't need to quarantine. The plan is based on the guidance from the CDC, the New York State Department of Education. Now, um forthcoming will be uh, we expect there be to the mandate from the New York State Department of Health on masks, as well as um guidance that received from Nassau County specifically with regard to contact tracing. So we broke this up into a couple of different um areas. Uh, this is not new, a lot of our protocols will be carried over from last year because they work and because they are still necessary in order to keep everyone safe. So a lot of this um is not new, a lot of it is carried over and actually some of it is a little bit better than it was last year, I'm glad to say. So we will be welcoming all students back to full in-person learning. Um, we are prior, that is our priority is to have all of our students back in school. Um, we expect students to come in for in-person learning. Um, there will not be a a remote option this year and so all students will be expected to return. Student schedules will follow traditional in-person learning with increased health, safety and wellness procedures to support a safe return. So it's not so much increased, but with the increased population, the um, the protocols that we had last year in place will continue to support our students even with the increased capacity. If you remember, we had overall district-wide seventeen percent of our students stay on a remote option by the end of the year. So at the end of June, I believe we had twenty percent of our high school students on remote. And I'm not exactly sure, but it was similar in our two elementary schools. So we will have larger um populations, we'll have a typical enrollment that we do um in our schools. Students who do have a significant health consideration um should contact their building principal as well as the Department of Pupil Personnel Services as there will be a process for us to review a request um for a uh student to not learn in school. Um, last year, we were very lenient in terms of um parents requesting and just wanting their kids to stay home, there was a lot that was not known. And we did grant those requests, um but now the Department of Education is really encouraging um very, very strongly that we not offer remote options. And we agree, we believe all students need to be in school. Um, as I said, uh, all of the operations will follow uh the guidance that we excuse that wrong comma there. Um, but we'll follow all of the guidance that we've received from these agencies. Cleaning procedures um and protocols uh will continue for daily uh cleaning and sanitizing. Uh, in frequent hand washing and the use of hand sanitizer is still something that's encouraged. Face coverings uh we were told yesterday will be mandatory. Classroom design and physical distancing will be considered and we'll talk more about that. Signs and information visible throughout the building will um be enforced and will continue and we will need to conduct contact tracing. Um, we will be required to do that, however, we, as I said, we expect very few children to be identified. Yesterday, uh, we learned our new governor Hochul um directed the Department of Health to require masks. So uh, that was in a press conference yesterday and we do expect that to be forthcoming, although we have not yet received any directive um to us. We usually get these things uh in email or um actually always through email um or conveyed to us through BOSI, so since the directive was only made yesterday, we do expect we will hear something uh before school starts, but it will be um a universal mask requirement for all students, staff and visitors in public schools. In addition, um, the governor did announce that the state will require all school personnel to be vaccinated or submit to, I believe it is weekly COVID testing. Again, we will need to have guidance on that, which we have not yet received. Um, and I imagine it will be forthcoming with the specifics. So, uh, the use of face coverings, um at the start, as we start the school year, all students, staff and visitors, as I said, will be required to wear face masks while on campus indoors. Now, that was not clarified by the governor, but we are assuming that we know that it's a lot safer outside. Um, when our students are outside, they are spaced and so we are hoping that uh the mandate does not include um masks outdoors, so right now, that's what we're going with. If that changes, um, and it's a mandate, we will, we'll need to follow that, but we're hoping that masks will not be required during outdoor activities. Um, parents gave us some feedback about mask breaks. Um, whenever those mask breaks are needed, they will be allowed and specific guidelines and protocols will be communicated by the principals to families and by the teachers to families and students. And I know that some students, we learned, we heard, some students don't feel comfortable asking for them. They're embarrassed or they're just shy and so we need to accommodate that. We don't want kids sitting and being uncomfortable, so those, that will be addressed um on an individual basis. We would encourage parents to let us know if their child is, is uncomfortable asking for a mask break and so the teachers can certainly check in with them and remind students that they can take mask breaks um when they need them. I, I do have to say, um, asking teachers and being in the buildings, the kids did, did really well last year. Um, I'm not looking forward to now wearing a mask every day, all the time either, but um, I think we all adapted to what we had to do and um, the kids did as well. Kids are very resilient and adaptable and um, if your child does have or a child does have a particular medical condition um and is, it's impossible for them to wear a mask, uh, a doctor's note should be provided and the school nurse will address that with the parent as we did last year. I can't say this enough, that safety is our main priority, I think this is redundant. Um, but managing the risk of exposure continues to be the most important thing that we do so that everybody can report to school and work every day. The mitigating the risk of exposure, as I said, masks are a key strategy in keeping everyone in school and safe. And you'll hear this because of the CDC guidance on um contact tracing. Uh, so that along with physical distancing, so masks plus physical distancing equals everyone staying in school. Um, so this year, um, they've relaxed the um, the physical distancing requirement and now students need to be seated at least three feet or more apart whenever possible. Um, we are pretty um sure that that is going to be possible in almost all of our classrooms, but we know that we have some very small classrooms. Our building is old and not all of the classes are um as accommodating. Um, and some of the class, we've tried to uh schedule, I believe, larger classes in larger classrooms, but we will be keeping a few of the barriers in places where um the three-feet distancing is difficult um between every single student, but for the most part, um, almost, I think in every classroom setting, um, the three feet will be possible. Physical distancing will also be practiced during lunch. Now, up here at the high school, we are keeping the barriers in the lunchroom, but we will also be um allowing students to eat outdoors whenever possible. Tables and chairs will be set up, little tents will be set up. Mr. Schaefer's working hard and in his letter home to families, he will share the particulars of that. But as long as the weather is um, is good, there will be spaces for students to go outdoors. Um, someone had mentioned that the kids um really didn't speak to each other and they were on their phones. And that was the case the first few days of school last year. I went in the cafeteria and kids were sitting there with their heads down on their phones, but as the year went on, they absolutely spoke to one another. Um, the noise level increased in the cafeteria and they were uh yelling across the aisles and speaking with one another and conversing, so it was a social uh opportunity for them. Um, of course, not ideal. In the elementary schools, uh, grades one through six, we're going to be moving them into the cafeterias. Um, that will be a little bit risky um in that we are unable to fit all kids in the cafeteria and have them six feet apart. So we will um be, they will be seated three feet apart. Um, and unfortunately, if there is a positive case and they have their masks off for more than fifteen minutes, um, there could be cases where students would have to quarantine. That's in the lower grades. Um, we are going to encourage the mon, have the monitors, encourage students that when they are finished, uh, they can put their masks back on so that it limits the amount of time, many kids eat very quickly. And if they put their mask back on, it will, they will maintain that safe um distance and of course, go outside as soon as they possibly can. Um, and unfortunately, due to scheduling, that's not always possible, but if we can adjust and get kids outside a little bit sooner, um, and then not have them sit in the cafeteria for the entire time we usually do, as long as kids are finished eating, we will hopefully do that. Um, for now, and again, the plan is going to be fluid as circumstances possibly change, as the guidelines change. Um, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later, but for now, we are going to limit indoor gatherings um of large, large gatherings, student assemblies, performances and school-wide parent meetings, um such as back-to-school night. Um, for athletics, um, we will have spectators uh in the gymnasium and of course outdoors, when the games are held outdoors and guidance for that will be shared, but spectators will be allowed in the gymnasium to watch their students play. Field trips will be paused, we're not using um a stronger word than that because we do want to evaluate if there are certain field trips that can be um safely um executed, then we can do that. So we've asked the principals to evaluate them, we're not making a blanket statement because if there is something like going to the Bethpage um Restoration Village where they can all be outside um on a nice day and socially distant, then um that would be something we would consider, so we will evaluate that on an ongoing basis. We will continue to limit outside visitors, um essential visitors will continue to be required to complete a health screener. So for contact tracing, um, the Department of Health, um guidelines will continue to be followed, they will be linked on our website, so you can view those. Uh, we did receive written guidance directly for schools from the Department of Health. And the general principles of contact tracing are still required uh for us to use to monitor potentially exposed invis, um individuals. However, this caveat or this exception is very important and gave us a lot of flexibility and we're very pleased that this was put into place. Um, so I'm going to read word for word, um, in the K-12 indoor classroom setting, the close-contact definition excludes students who were within three to six feet of an infected student if both the infected student and the exposed student, students correctly and consistently wore well-fitting masks the entire time. That's really significant because that is not what we were told to follow last year. If you were within um six feet um or less and the barriers did not count as a mitigating factor, um, we had to quarantine students who were surrounding the infected student. Um, a lot of school districts just wiped out the whole class and sent the whole class home, we did not do that. We were very selective, our principals spent a lot of thought and time measuring and being interviewing students, interviewing the teacher, having seating charts, so we knew exactly who to zero in on it. And that was really helpful and I commend them for that because that was not the case in a lot of places. So this is the um, the good news is that given the new quarantine protocols, there will be very few, if any, healthy students quarantined under the universal masking mandate. And, and that is why the masking mandate really makes sense because it goes back to the guiding principle of keeping all students in school. And I spoke with parents last week in a Zoom meeting about this and again, parents want their kids in school, we want your kids in school, we want our teachers in school and masks will help us to do that. None of us wanted to come back to school wearing masks, nobody voted for, yes, I want to wear a mask. But in the context of how can we be safe, how can we keep people safe and healthy and how can we make sure that everyone stays in school, it's the only thing that makes sense, that and the three-feet distancing. Um, last year, um, we were not aware of any transmission of the virus um in school. And we do have data on that because we would know that if Johnny was uh infected with COVID and the five people around him had to quarantine, if one of those five came down with COVID, we would have known that. And that didn't happen, it did happen only in cases where students were gathering outside of school in other settings, but not in school. Um, and we know, we knew that there was a party or there was a gathering where students were together and, and that was shared with us. So we did a great job, but we also quarantined a number of healthy children. I don't want to say for no reason because it was trying to keep everyone safe, so this is significant and important and helpful to us. We will however, inform parents that their child um was exposed because I think parents would like to know that information and they should be observing their children for symptoms uh in the days after the exposure has taken place. So uh, again, these are protocols that were in place uh last year, I'm not going to go over them because they're the um, you know, common sense protocols that we all followed and continue to follow. These are the cleaning and sanitizing uh recommendations, we will continue to follow the CDC and New York guidelines and beyond. Um, we, we really go beyond, the CDC is saying once a day, we do clean more often and we also fog, um, we also fog every space, um, every classroom, every night and that makes a difference, that's uh technology that uh fogs the rooms and kills any um virus or germs uh that could be um present in the air. A protocol is still in place uh for um personnel uh to express concerns about their classrooms, um and any room where an infected individual uh was identified, that room is immediately cleaned um immediately following the identification and we'll continue to do that. Again, um, cleaning supplies will be made available uh for teacher use, students are not allow, are not allowed to be asked to clean, however, um, students can bring their own wipes in from home and if they choose to, they can, but we, we did, we're not allowed to ask students to clean off the desks. Many students do bring um wipes and they, they clean their own area and that's of course, welcome if they choose to do that. As far as facilities, um, as you know, um, you know, we will be doing a lot of HVAC work um over the next year as part of the bond, but unfortunately, that's not in place this year, but we do have um air filtration, we, we are, air filters are replaced as required, our HVAC system does meet the standards. Um, can it be better? Yes, the new system will be much better, um, but as of now, um, you know, we've been assured by our architect and Mr. Daly that our um HVAC systems meet the requirement. We still in, are going to encourage uh teachers to open the windows. Um, the signage and visual aids and markings on the floor will still be in place. Um, and we will encourage students to physically distance as they walk through the hallways and the stairways. We'll have one-direction stairways to help with that. We will have occupancy limits in certain spaces, um, just as a precaution. Um, but the limits will not, no longer need to be posted on classroom doors. Um, deliveries will not, we will, will have limited access to the building and um we will, as I said before, have visitor restriction. So what happens when we have a positive case, um, much like um last year? Uh, except there are a few changes, uh, we had asked parents to do a home health screener, it was the honor system. We had sent home the CDC parent screener um and a letter explaining that, that letter will go home again and we encourage parents to self-monitor uh or to monitor their children's health and faculty will be asked to self-monitor. Uh, we will not, we will no longer have a screener for employees like we did, we had an electronic app, we had an app last year that is no longer recommended by the CDC and I have to say, um, we had incredible cooperation from our faculty as well as from our students and families and people did stay home when they were sick, as they should, even not during the pandemic. Um, and so that, that is uh the protocol that we're going to follow this year. This is really um, again, the kind of some suggested guidelines, monitor children for signs of illness. Um, unwell students will be sent to the nurse uh for assessment, um, maintaining social distancing, good hygiene, mask-wearing. If a child does present with possible COVID symptoms, this is the protocol that the nurses will follow. Uh, we did have that at times, um, we did have a quarantine room which we will continue and if it is suspected that someone uh, someone who presents with COVID-like symptoms, um, and the parent can't come up immediately, the, the child will be uh placed in a quarantine room with the nurse, um, until the parent can come and pick the child up, um, just as a precaution. And then we do expect these things to still be followed, we need a release, uh, if a child does get a positive case, they, it should be recorded, we have to report it to the um Nassau County Department of Health. They also will be issued um an email from the Department of Health and we need that release in order for the individual to return to school. I, I think I've covered most of this, again, um, the close-contact definition again is going to help us out a lot with contact tracing and we do expect to have many less uh students quarantined. So um, where do I go if I have concerns, this is an important part of the plan, I know we, we've kind of become pros at this, but we will have um, you know, twenty percent more of our students coming back in and so parents will be new to some of these protocols. We encourage uh parents to call, contact the principal or the school nurse. Um, they are designated as COVID resource individuals, um, myself, Mr. Daly and Mr. Gregory, our new director of athletics, uh PE, health and athletics are designated as the COVID-nineteen district health and safety coordinators. Um, we are responsible for ensuring compliance uh with all of the health and safety aspects of the plan, but we want parent, we want to hear from parents, um, as I said, especially the parents whose children are returning, may have more concerns. Please don't be afraid to ask questions, you can email us, call us, we are here to support our families um in this transition. And also, we would hope that you will uh direct, you can direct questions to the nurse, um, but most importantly, you should speak to your, uh, parents should speak to their child's doctor if they are unsure of their symptoms. if they are unsure of their symptoms, because of course, COVID is serious, and we would want you to contact your own personal healthcare provider. As of now, emergency drills will continue to take place as they did last year with modifications. We are, we were told today by our safety coordinator that we're awaiting possible formal guidance on emergency drills from New York State. But last year, we did have modifications, so the drills, a lot of the instruction was given verbally. We did not follow the, you know, moving kids all the way into the corner where they would be in close contact with one another, but we modeled and demonstrated what students should do. Of course, regular fire drills took place, and we will see what the guidance is from New York State with regard to that. If it changes, if it doesn't change, we'll continue to do what we did last year. Our instructional plan, connecting our students back to school. This is the most important facet of the plan. The instructional goals for this year will be to keep stu-, whoops, there's a typo there. I apologize. It's 2021-22 school year. Again, keep students and staff healthy and safe, maximize in-person teaching and learning, be responsive to student needs, and follow all of the guidance that we are putting forth tonight. Some of this is redundant. We will not have a full-day remote option this year. As I said before, we were very lenient in how parents could determine if they wanted their child on remote learning, and they were able to have a real-time, we called it synchronous, learning experience in the classroom. That was very difficult for our teachers. I commend them. They did a yeoman's job of educating in all of those modalities and adapted their teaching, learn new technology skills. But this year, that will not be offered. We will really expect all of our students to be back, as I said before. If a student has an extenuating circumstance, we will address that privately. If a student is required to quarantine, instruction will be provided, but it will look different than it did last year. And we'll talk in a moment about that. One-to-one devices will be issued to all students this year in grades three through 12, and that's part of our instructional program. And if students do need to quarantine in grades K-1 and 2, they will also be provided with a device. And any student that needs, does not have Wi-Fi, will be provided with a Wi-Fi hotspot. So as I said before, families with an extenuating medical condition or a serious condition should contact those individuals that are there. So again, a little redundant about a regular schedule, but extracurricular activities and athletics will resume with the opening of school. So there's no pause on that. All clubs will be running. As of now, all athletics will be running, and we plan to resume that as normal. Building protocols will remain in place and be reviewed by the principals. Regular bell schedule will start, and dismissal times will remain the same. The elementary schools will continue to have multiple entrances, but due to a new technology that's being rolled out in the high school, we will have, go back to a single point of entry at the junior, senior high school because of our scholarship technology that's being rolled out. And so, but those details regarding arrival dismissal and building-specific issues or protocols will be shared directly with families by the building principal. And children will change classes. I know parents were concerned about the cohorting in the middle school. We will not be cohorting students. They will be changing classes as they normally would. So district responsibilities for quarantined students. As I said, there will be no concurrent or synchronous remote option. Home instruction will be provided as required by New York State regulations. And teachers will be pushing out assignments for students regularly through Google Classroom as they normally do. And then students who would choose, would elect or would qualify for a program because they are medically fragile, or students who are quarantined would receive tutoring. New York State requires 10 hours for secondary students a week and five hours for elementary students a week. Most likely, that would be provided after school, because we would hope if the classroom teacher is available and can, they would be the ones providing the instruction for the students. And of course, during the day, they're working, so it would be provided after school. As I said, teachers will push out assignments and the Wi-Fi. I think I covered everything. The process we will be using is called a Section 504 process, and that will be what we will share with families who contact us, whose child might require, might be unable to attend school. Again, K through 2 students who must quarantine, I said this, will be receiving a device. And for students with disabilities, as has been the case, all services will be provided as per their IEP, and students with Section 504 plans that provide academic accommodations will continue to receive those supports as specified in their plan. In the event, and we hope this is not going to happen, because we hope things will at least stay stable and not increase, but in the event that a building or the district had to close due to COVID, and again, that would be, that would most likely be a mandate, or if the level of infections reached a certain level in a school that it would not make sense, or we could not staff a building. Sometimes that was the reason that we closed last year. We had so many people quarantined, we couldn't adequately staff it. Again, it's something we hope that does not happen, but we would then have to pivot to full remote instruction if a building were to close. But that's hopefully an outside chance. Athletics and co-curricula, as I said, will begin. Band, chorus, and orchestra will resume. We have protocols in place for those rehearsals. They may have to be staggered on bad weather days, but at the elementary school, the band may appear, still have to practice in the gym, but we're going to make it happen. I said sports will take place. And as we move forward, we expect to resume our musical theater program and our concerts. And, you know, the format that that will take, we will see. But what's most important is that the students be engaged in these activities and that you also, as families and our community, can experience them. Hopefully, they will be able to experience them live, but if not, we can pivot to virtual concerts. But again, what's most important is that the students have the opportunity to participate in these activities. Building protocols. The junior, senior high school students will be permitted to use hallway lockers. Students will use the locker room to change for phys ed classes, and lockers will be available for athletic teams for practice and games. That was something else that we heard that families wanted. Families wanted lockers back, and especially the athletic lockers, to store their equipment, and those things are going to happen. Elementary and junior high school clubs will meet in person, or they may meet virtually. It may make more sense at times for a group to meet virtually, and we leave that up to the club advisors, but we will be encouraging, as a standard, that those groups meet in person. Of course, there could be cases where the elementary student council has so many students that want to participate, and the room may not accommodate them at three feet apart, and they can't go outdoors. They could, they could do it on a Google Meet. So that will be flexible based on the conditions and the size of the groups. Elementary and secondary principals will be sending out letters with specific procedures for arrival dismissal and other specifics that are unique to their particular building, and parents will be receiving that shortly. We know that we are concerned about students returning. As I said before, we have about 20% of our students that have been out of school for a year and a half. That's a concern. We know that even students who have been reporting to school every day have a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of social, emotional needs, and we are prepared to address those, as also prepared to support parents who feel anxious about having their students returning to school. Those are real concerns, and we do not want to dismiss any concern that a parent has, and we will not. And we want to make sure that all of our students acclimate well back to school. It occurred to us that our seventh-grade students who were on remote learning have never set foot in the junior, senior high school before, or at least they don't know the layout of the building. So tours were set up for those students to come in who are now going into eighth grade, who have never been in the building. We may have new entrants who opted for remote learning and never, are not familiar with the footprint of the building. So those students will be invited to come in over the next couple of days to get the lay of the land in the building, and if their parents would like to come in as well. So these are, it's very important that we be aware, consider, and address the unique needs of these students, and make sure they feel safe and comfortable, and try to ease any concerns that they have as they return to school. So activities will be done in the classrooms, just acclimating kids back. It's, and there's always a little anxiety at the beginning of the school year, but we expect it to be somewhat increased because of the situation with COVID. Teachers will take the time to build a foundation in the classroom and having relationships. Some of them last year never saw their teacher in person, only through Zoom. And so that, we know how important relationship building is for our students, and our teachers are amazing at that, at building relationships, making our students feel welcome, safe, and comfortable in school. So there will be a focus on wellness throughout the district. Teachers will be provided training in stress first aid, as well as ongoing support from school mental health staff, and of course, our partners with Northwell Health. They have been terrific through the pandemic, providing consultation as well as workshops for families. Those will continue throughout the year, and our teachers will be receiving training from Dr. Foer, the psychiatrist from Northwell Health, on what students, what we should expect our students to experience when they come back in the fall. And that will be provided on superintendent's conference days. And in addition, our social workers and psychologists have prepared developmentally appropriate presentations for each of the buildings also on our second superintendent's conference day. Staff professional development will continue to focus on a whole-student approach, prioritizing student needs and providing appropriate supports. If kids don't feel comfortable, if they are not feeling good about themselves and at ease, we know that they can't learn, and that's just a prerequisite for learning. So there will be a focus on that. We do have an additional counselor that we've added through our federal funding up here at the high schools, so that there can be more Tier One as well as Tier Two-level supports for our secondary students. And that also, with that hire, it also allowed Mr. O'Driscoll to be full-time down at the elementary schools as the elementary guidance counselor. So all of our buildings will be getting more support. Again, supporting our students. What classroom routines do they need to know coming back after a year and a half for some of them? We will be incorporating additional school-wide Tier One supports. Both of our, all of our schools will be adopting new programs. One is called the ruler approach, and that will be adopted at both elementary schools. You will hear more about that from the elementary principals. And up here at the high school, we'll be implementing the sources of strength program. In addition, we rolled out last year Aaron's Law, which is a second-step unit on child protection that's now required by New York State. We also want to continue to support our families. We know that we communicated frequently and through Zoom a lot last year, and parents, the feedback we got was very positive, so we will continue those meetings. Our principals do coffee and conversations on a regular basis. I will be holding a meeting on Monday to go over the plan, which is very clear, but I know parents have a lot of questions, and they always think of something that we haven't, which is great. So we will have a dialogue, a quick review of the plan, which will be sent home. I'll let them know where it's posted, so they can review it, and then hopefully just have a more interactive opportunity on Monday evening at 6:00, so parents can ask questions. But we want this dialogue to continue. We want parents to reach out to their teachers, to their administrators, and to central office with any questions that they have. And we do ask that you follow a chain of command and start with the teacher, of course, unless it's something specific to facilities, you can direct it in that direction, and so on. And we do have a document on our website that speaks to that. Families who need additional assistance. We know that some families may still be struggling. There still may be food insecurity. Our mental health staff, our social workers are here to help all families, and all they have to do is reach out. And this is an unbelievable community. You give, you know, you step up when families are in need, and our teachers do the same. There's a spirit of generosity that exists in the East Rockaway community, and when, anything is needed, people do step up to provide it. So please reach out, families who are listening, if you have any needs. And again, as I said, we will continue our partnership with Northwell Health, which has proved to be very, very important and useful and effective. So next steps. A letter will be sent out tomorrow, providing, the board approves this plan tonight. The board does have the need and the authority to approve our reentry plan, given that we do not have mandates from New York State as we did last year. That's a significant difference, so we will be taking any questions that the board has and any comments in a minute or two. As I said, I'll be holding a Zoom meeting on Monday. A link will be sent out via email, and building letters will be forthcoming from our principals. This is important to understand. As conditions change, we will be reviewing this plan. We do hope that conditions will improve. We also hope, and our, my state organization of superintendents, as well as the New York State School Boards Association, have asked the Department of Health and the state for metrics that we can, that can be used regionally. We don't know if that's going to be put in place, but different areas have different positivity rates, different vaccination rates. With the vaccination mandate now, we will know, or we should know, which of our staff members are vaccinated, and that along with the metrics from East Rockaway will be helpful for us to know. Where does our community stand with regard to the vaccinations and also our positivity rate? And it would give some flexibility for the, for school districts, I doubt by district, but possibly by county, to make adjustments to their plan. And again, as I said, that does not yet exist, but it is something that organizations are lobbying for and may, may be forthcoming. So I thank you for your support and your understanding, and I will turn it over to our board if we can adjourn back to the table and, any questions or any comments?
Okay. I want to thank Superintendent Ruiz and the administrative team for working throughout the summer to create a comprehensive reentry plan for our kids. This has been a difficult process for all. We are rolling into a third academic school year affected by this pandemic, and I would like to see our kids get as normal a school year as possible, offering athletic events, musicals, concerts, extracurricular activities, just to name a few. With this plan, kids have the opportunity to receive their education with minimal to no interruption. It is my hope that we are able to move into a mask optional environment as numbers go down and mandates are lifted. In the meantime, it is essential that we all remain positive for the sake of our kids, and whenever concerns or questions arise, while I know that social media is often an outlet for many in the community, please contact your building administrators, Superintendent Ruiz, and/or the Board of Education to get direct and accurate answers.
For the last few weeks, I've been reading as much as I can, trying to understand both sides of this. It's statewide, nationwide. I mean, I'm sure a lot of you have seen board meetings that have just been chaotic because of this. And as a parent and as a teacher myself, I understand both sides of this. Now, as a teacher... Now, as a teacher, I know that my students learn better without masks. I can see their facial expressions. They can see my facial expressions when I'm speaking. So I know for the kids, it's definitely better to not have masks. That being said, I also know how important safety is. Now, with the vaccine mandates that are coming also, we'll know, almost all teachers will be vaccinated at some point. So that creates a different issue. But I personally believe that students learn better without masks. But we're in a situation that, you know, with people's health and safety, that might not be possible. Now, the only thing that changes it as the state came out with the mandate that kids do not have to quarantine if they are three feet or more away from another student who is COVID-positive. Now, speaking with Mrs. Ruiz and Mr. Di Tomaso, that is a game changer. Because of that, all of the contact tracing that was going on last year doesn't have to go on. So that makes it a little different. The one question I had was, if the state comes out with a metric mandate, then we can look into going to something like that, if that happens down the road? Okay. All right.
As you can tell, this has always been one of the areas, you know, mandates, mandates, because people are really tired of mandates. And we get it. We all get it. I don't think anybody who believes in the United States of America believes in mandates. Because we're a nation that thrives on the fact of everybody having something to contribute to society, to the communities that we live in. And as was what was said before, one thing that I want to hang on to is that the metrics. The metrics are a real indicator for us, right, of moving forward. Whatever options come down from Albany, from our governor with the mask on now, that in the future, if we're looking at metrics, and this community shows good metrics, that will be mask optional, all right, as a district. Thank you.
I agree with everyone so far. Listen, there is no perfect plan right now. Unfortunately, there are all these mandates. We want our kids in school. We want our kids learning in school. So right now, this is what we have to do. As new guidance comes out, we have to, you know, listen to the science, listen to the facts, and adjust the plan. But as of right now, this is the plan. And I think this is the right plan for the district. And thank you for working on it, and I appreciate it.
Hello, everyone. I would like to record the show the following. I am in favor of optional masking. The right and freedom of choice should never be taken away from the people, especially in our district. Only a parent should mandate what's best for their children's health and safety. We talk about my body, my choice. That should also apply to wearing masks, or mandating a vaccine, or anything else that pertains to this situation. With all of those things being said, and removing my own personal opinion, we have to look at what's best for our children in getting them back into school, getting educated, and keeping them in school in a semi-normal environment. Now, I believe all of us up here, our number-one goal is to get all of our children, including my own, back to a normal educational process, which we could all say we know and love. Until then, we have a mandate that is forced on us. We're going to do our best to fight through it, follow the guidelines for now. And as soon as possible, we will get our children back to normal. And I want to thank you all for your patience, your kind understanding, and together we'll get through this. So thank you very much.
Item number three on the agenda, public comments on agenda items. If you are viewing the live stream of tonight's meeting, and you have questions regarding items on the agenda or other school-related items, you can email them to boardofeducation@erst.org. Please note that this is a new email address, and the school website has been updated with the new email address as well. This email will be monitored throughout the evening. Please be sure to include your full name and address. I also want to remind you that most concerns are appropriately addressed with your child's teacher and/or building principal. Other general district questions should be directed to Mrs. Ruiz or superintendent. Matters involving curriculum and instruction should be addressed to Mr. Di Tomaso. And matters involving budget and facilities should be directed to Ms. Scrivo. If you need technological assistance or have issues with a device, please reach out to Mr. Fisk. Anyone who is attending in person, if you would like to make any comments, please complete a comment card located here at the table. And at this time, are there any comments regarding tonight's agenda items?
We have nothing, Amanda.
Okay. Moving on to number four, approval of minutes. Are there any questions from the board regarding the minutes from July 7th, July 20th, and August 2nd meeting? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved by Mr. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vulpes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Item number five, acknowledgement of monthly reports and correspondence, receipt of monthly financial reports, June 2021, and correspondence, we did not have any correspondence. We actually did receive one correspondence that I do not have with me at this time, but it was from the leaders of the Teachers Association, the aides, and I believe the clerical... And the monitors. Okay, and the administrators. And this was really speaking to the mask mandate, and how they felt that the masks could be utilized within the school. Clearly, that was something that was taken out of anybody's control because that was a directive that was given. But thank you for your input on that item. Moving on to number six, recommendations of the superintendent of schools. I will turn this over to Superintendent Ruiz.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hagan. Tonight, I'll be recommending that the board accept the following resignations: Dakota Turenzi, substitute monitor and substitute teacher aide; Nancy Brockett, part-time monitor; Renee Saintville, short-term substitute family and consumer science teacher; Jessica Signorillo, leave replacement media arts teacher; Joseph Cohen, permanent substitute teacher; Megan Labrizzi, leave replacement school counselor; and Christine Pelizzi, teacher aide. Also recommending that the board approve a change in the effective date of the appointment of Mr. Gary Gregory as the district physical education, health, and athletics to August 27th. Mr. Gregory was previously appointed earlier in August, and his start date was up in the air as to when he would be released by his district. But fortunately, he will formally assume his role on Friday. And he has been in the district getting to know everyone and actually doing a lot of work. He's actually been doing two jobs for the last couple of weeks. So we thank him for all the time he's given up. And we wish him much success in his new role. Also recommending the board approve the request of Alisa Stegner for child-rearing leave of absence from her math teacher position, effective August 31st through January 28th. Also recommending that the board approve the following correction to item 54E from the July 7th, 2021 minutes, to read as follows: That they approve the appointment of Allison King to the position of leave replacement English teacher. And the correction was the salary step, which is MA 15 step entry. Also recommending that the board approve the four-year probationary appointment of Jana Guber to the position of reading teacher, effective August 31st, subject to applicable laws and regulations at the MA Step 1 annual salary. Also recommending that the board approve the appointment of Megan Labrizzi to the position of part-time school counselor, Point 8, effective August 31st through June 30th, 2022. Also recommending that the board approve the appointment of Jessica Rizzo to the position of short-term substitute physical education teacher. Recommending the board approve the appointment of Alexis Freidenberg to the position of part-time special education teacher. And the board approve the appointment of Rebecca Mantle, who is an East Rockaway graduate from the class of 2009, to the leave replacement school counselor position, effective August 31st through January 28th, 2022. Also recommending the board approve the appointment of Sheila Olson to the position of leave replacement media arts teacher. Also recommending that the board approve the appointment of Stephen Smalldon to the position of leave replacement special education teacher, effective August 31st through January 28th, 2022. Recommending the board approve the appointment of James Hickey to the position of athletic placement process evaluator, effective August 26th. And recommending that the board approve the appointment of Matthew Lederer to the position of teacher aide, effective upon civil service approval. So recommending that the board rescind the appointment of Christopher Mormondo as a substitute cleaner. That was approved at the June 15th... I'm sorry, June 15th Board of Education meeting. So recommending that the board approve the following temporary assignments at the salaries approved by the East Rockaway Board of Education. And those are Ashley Tavromina, substitute teacher aide; Kristen Clark, substitute nurse; Amanda Crawford, substitute monitor; Deanna Servita, substitute monitor; Kathy Matthews, substitute monitor; Gregory Fields, substitute cleaner; Alicia Farron Crew, substitute teacher aide.
Thank you, Superintendent Ruiz. Are there any questions from the board regarding item 6, A through O? Can I have a motion to approve 6, A through O?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kilgus, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Other items, 7A. Approve the following resolution for the district's free and free plan. Are there any questions from the board or comments regarding the reentry plan? Can I have a motion to approve the reentry plan?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vulpes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. 7B. Approve the following resolution. This resolution approves the award of bids to enter into service agreements with Dr. Richard Addis, Capital Markets Advisors LLC, and Hawkins, Delafield, and Woods LLP. C, approve the contract for Oasis Youth Drug Use Services between the East Rockaway UFSD and the Nassau County Department of Human Services. D, authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations to extend transportation contracts for the 2021-2022 school year. E, approve the awards of the bids for transportation services to the following companies, Bosse's and Independent Coach Corp. Are there any questions for item 7B through E? Can I have a motion to accept 7B through A?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Di Matteo, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kilgus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. 7F. The district has asked to enter into an intermunicipal cooperation agreement with the Malvern Union Free School District during the 2021-22 school year. G. The district has discussed with representatives of the Limburg Union Free School District entering into a cooperative transportation agreement for the 2021-2022 school year. H. Approve the health and welfare agreement between East Rockaway UFSD and Lawrence Public Schools for the health and welfare services for the 2020-2021 school year. I. Approve the admission of the following students to attend the East Rockaway Public Schools for the Special Education Summer 2021 Program. J. Approve the admission of the following students to attend the East Rockaway Public Schools for the 2021-2022 school year. K. Approve the tuition agreement with Lawrence UFSD for special education services for one student for the 2021-2022 school year. L. Approve the tuition agreement with Deveraux Foundation for special education services for one student for the 2021-2022 school year. M. Approve the admission of one Massapeak Public Schools one student for special education services for the 2021-2022 school year. N. Approve the tuition agreement with Schoolville Center for Children's Center for special education services for one student for the 2021-2022 school year. And O. Declare obsolete for the purpose of disposal and/or recycling the items listed on the following textbook-removable forms. Are there any questions on item 7F through O? Can I have a motion to approve item 7F through O?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McNally, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vulpes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Item number eight, approval of CSE and CPSE recommendations. Those were emailed home. Are there any questions regarding the CSE and CPSE recommendations? Can I have a motion to approve item eight?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kilgus, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Item number nine, budget transfers. A. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following two budget transfers. Are there any questions from the board regarding budget transfers? Can I have a motion to accept item number nine, A?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McNally, second. Second by Mr. Vulpes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Item number 10, policy matters. I will turn this over to Mr. McNally.
Okay, the entire board, Superintendent Ruiz and Assistant Superintendent Di Tomaso met on July 20th to discuss Policy 0105, Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education. This policy has been a work in progress, and we are proud to be adopting the final document this evening. Okay, Policy for Adoption 0105, Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education. This policy is for boards to make a commitment to take a close look at increasing equity, inclusivity, and diversity in their districts. Equity is a focus of New York's Every Student Succeeds Act plan. It has become increasingly clear that simply providing equal opportunity is not enough to allow every student to succeed and close achievement gaps. Therefore, this policy highlights the importance of equity and inclusion in maintaining a healthy and thriving environment for all students and employees. We will continue to review the following policies: 0115, Student Harassment and Bullying Prevention and Intervention; 4710, Grading Systems; 8130, School Safety Plans and Teams; 9150, Non-Fraternalization; 6705, Federal Funds Purchasing; and 8413, Transportation for Non-Public Schools. And the date for our next meeting is to be determined.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNally. Are there any questions from the board members regarding the policy up for adoption this evening? Okay, can I have a motion to adopt Policy 0105, Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kilgus, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Di Matteo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved. Item number 11, Reports. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Ruiz for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hagan.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Heagan. It's been a very busy summer, as it usually is. I always say I love my friends who say, "Oh, it's great you have the summer off," but it's actually one of our busiest times for many reasons. And this reason, we have a lot of exciting things going on, most notably the construction that's been taking place that you've all seen. And Mrs. Creo is going to give us a report shortly about the progress of our bond projects. But we're very, very excited and pleased as how this work has moved forward. We've also been planning for the return to school, as you can see tonight, not only with regard to COVID, but also with hiring. We've hired 15 new teachers. And Mr. DiTomaso is going to share with you our new teacher orientation plans, which started today. And we're so excited to welcome a very enthusiastic, bright, and committed group of professionals to our faculty. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Gregory, as I mentioned before, who will be our new Director of Physical Ed, Education, Health, and Athletics. And he will officially begin on Friday. He's been a pleasure to work with so far, and we look forward to working together. Our Universal Pre-Kindergarten program is all set to open. So you will be seeing little ones around the building. We will be having a four-year-old class each at Center Avenue, at Ram Avenue. We're all very, very excited. I think I'll be spending more time in the elementary schools because of that. As you know, Scope was awarded the contract, and we've been working closely with them over the summer. They are a pleasure to work with, very professional. They run many programs across Long Island. The teachers, I'm sorry, have been hired, and there'll be one full-time teacher and one teaching assistant in each of the classrooms, one each in Ram and Center. Furniture has been ordered, and the Scope representative toured the buildings with Mr. DiTomaso yesterday. And the orientation for students and parents will take place on Monday, August 30th. There are 26 spots that were funded through the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Grant, and there were three that the district has funded. I'm sorry, there are, I apologize. There were 26 spots that are funded by the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Grant, and then the district has funded an additional number of spots. And then there are also parent pay spots. So originally, there would have been 13 in each class, but the district funded two additional spots for, at no cost to families, to make 15. And then there's a maximum allowable number of 18 students. So the three extra spots were made available to parents on a pay basis, self-pay basis. And two, I believe it's two of those spots that are now still open at Center Avenue. So if there's anyone that would like, you know someone who has a four-year-old who would like to attend school at a very reasonable, attend our preschool program at a very reasonable rate, there are two pay spots open at Center Avenue. As you are aware, school opens for students on September 2nd, but our teachers will be back on 31st, and Mr. DiTomaso is going to fill you in on those plans. As I mentioned before, our students will be welcomed back to a new system at the high school for entering the building called Scholarship. It's a very high-tech program that will be used for student management, daily attendance, and visitor management. It's also helpful in an emergency to know who is in the building. This is something that's been recommended time and time again. And if an emergency were to occur, we really don't know which students stayed in for lunch and which stayed, which went out for lunch, in our 11th and 12th graders. So students now will be required to scan in and out at lunchtime so we can, we can very easily produce a list of students who are in and out of the building. And that's one of the reasons we'll be going back to a single point of entry at the high school. This will enhance security and facilitate visitor management because it does tap into various databases of, oh my goodness, escaping me, child abuse. I have the child abuse database, so it will provide an added layer of protection and security for our district. I want to thank Mr. Schaper, Mr. Kraus, and Mr. Fisk for all of their work in evaluating and implementing this program. And we're looking forward to seeing how it works. I'd also like to thank the Board for their support in the development of our reentry plan. We know this is not easy. The Board asks very thoughtful questions, and they, they know that they represent the views of the community and the parents. And so I commend them for that, and I thank them for their support in approving our plan tonight. I would also like to commend the Board on the development and the adoption of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity Policy. Discussing this policy with the Board and then with our administrators for the development of the regulations led to some very important and rich conversations. And I know, I look forward to implementing the policy and informing our faculty as well as families about what is included in that policy. So thank you for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DiTomaso, who will speak about.
Thank you and good evening. We're so excited to have our new teachers in our first orientation session today. Our administrative team welcomed them and helped them begin acclimating to the culture of East Rockaway and to begin their journey as part of our family. We have planned several exciting workshops for them to help them start build a solid instructional foundation. Today, Mr. Kennedy, our Thinking Maps extraordinaire, led the teacher discussion, and by the end of the session, all our new teachers were mapping. Tomorrow, Mr. Healy and Ms. Ruiz will be presenting on cultural proficiency and family engagement. Mr. Fisk will then be running a technology orientation, and then I will be presenting information on our APPR plan and the observation process. On Friday, we will finish up the orientation with visible learning by Ms. Ruiz and myself, and a special education presentation on professional responsibilities by Mr. Healy. We're all excited about providing a rich learning opportunity for our new staff. We look forward to introducing the new faculty to our community at our next Board of Education meeting.
And our ERPA Executive Board, Dr. Welkum, our teachers today. It's all been a really delicious life, so thanks for the leftovers. I'm sure I appreciate you taking that.
Good evening, everyone. This summer, we had three of our bond projects that we worked on. Two of them were at Center Avenue. The masonry project work is substantially completed. This consisted of extensive masonry repair and waterproofing throughout the entire building. A punch list of items that need to be addressed has been developed by the district and Park East Construction, which is our construction manager. This list is comprised of minor items and will not impact the opening of school. The second project at Center was the HVA system at Center Avenue, and it has been completely installed. As of today, there are a few classroom sinks that still need to be connected. The sinks will be installed prior to the start of the school year. Unfortunately, the switchgear needed to power up the new HVA system has been delayed. When it is received, it is estimated it will take three to four days to install. During the installation, the building will be without power. To avoid interference with the school, this will need to be scheduled during a recess period. The current service is still operational, and the building will have power and ventilation. We will not be able to use the newly-installed air conditioning units until the service is in place. However, the window air conditioners were all left in place so the classrooms will have air conditioning at the start of the school year. It's very unfortunate, but I'm sure all of you are experiencing. There are very, there is a short supply of a lot of supplies and materials, and it is impacting our projects. The third project that we worked on is our athletic complex. I'm sure many of you have seen our lights as you drive down, down the street. Very hard to miss. We were just notified that there were further delays with the delivery of materials needed to complete the athletic fields. Unfortunately, there continues to be a shortage in supplies and materials due to the pandemic. Early in the summer, we were notified of a delay in receiving the necessary electrical equipment needed to power the lights, scoreboard, and sound systems. On Thursday, we were notified the synthetic turf material has been delayed several weeks. The delay in the turf significantly impacts the completion of the project. The turf must be laid down prior to finalizing the track, fencing, entrance, archway, and parking lot. Based on the new timeline, we will not be able to hold fall sports on the complex. However, we're trying to get the fields to the point where we can hold the pep rally on October 15th and the homecoming game on October 16th. These would be the only two events to be held in the complex this fall. The work would recommence on October 18th. We hope to have a completion date before the winter months. Again, this is extremely disappointing to us, but it's really totally out of our control. The materials and the supplies just keep getting further and further delayed. On another note, I know there's been a lot of concerns raised about the rubber tire material at the playgrounds at both of our elementary schools. There is a substantial cost associated with replacing this material. To address this concern without impacting the taxpayer, we requested funding through our federal stimulus grant to support the replacement at both elementary schools. The application is currently under review by the state, and we're hopeful it will be approved. Once it's approved, we will share that information with the community. Thank you.
Mrs. Creo, I apologize. I jumped on. Mr. DiTomaso has a lot more to share with you.
Thank you. So we can't wait to start welcoming our faculty back for student, I'm sorry, for Superintendent's Conference Day. We have two days filled with professional development opportunities for all. We have wonders and Thinking Maps specialists running workshops, as well as our department and faculty meetings led by our very own administrators. In addition, we are presenting our safety plans that include COVID-19 protocols, as well as a tech camp for secondary teachers in which they can self-select workshops of their choice. We also included SEO, as Ms. Ruiz mentioned, for our staff and to welcome our students back. We look forward to those two professional development days to step to sage, to welcome everybody back, and of course, to welcome our students back on Thursday, which we're incredibly excited about. I'd like to just quickly report to you about our summer programs. There were several summer climb programs offered this year. We ran a high school summer program that included Algebra I, Earth Science, Global 9, Global 10, Living Environment, and US History. We had 27 high school students enrolled in these classes. The results were outstanding, and we're very proud of them. The students passed 34 out of 39 classes and were able to earn Regents credit by the exemption granted by New York State. And we're very excited about those positive results. We also offered a middle school summer climb program. There were four sections of AIS, seventh grade math, seventh and eighth grade math, seventh and eighth grade English. Each class was a combination of iReady and teacher-created materials. The iReady program helped improve student efficiencies and skills, which we believe helped close the summer slip gap. The English classes studied the I Am Alala novel, which is one, is our One School, One Book Initiative. We had 18 students registered between all four sections. And there was also flexibility built into the program so our students could attend other camps in the district. The elementary summer school climb program, the following programs were offered. Literacy for grades 1 through 6, STEM for grades 1 through 3, and story art for grades 1 through 3. We had 54 students enrolled in our literacy classes. The literacy classes were taught by our own teachers using eSpark, which is a new website-based reading program, along with other resources that our teachers use during the school year. Students typically brought home hands-on projects that they created during the week. And I happened to personally observe the program where they were building Ferris wheels with paper towels and different types of materials, and it was exciting, and the kids were very engaged. So that was very good to see in our elementary program. And last but not least, we offered a physical fitness summer climb. The physical fitness summer climb program was open to all students in grades 7 through 12, regardless if they played a sport or were on a team. 73 students registered, and during each day, students rotated between the weight room, yoga, and agilities. The program with success, in my opinion, was based on the fact that the enrollment increased as the program continued. The good word spread. And we'd like to thank Mr. Gibbons and Ms. Michelle Healy for their leadership in the summer climb programs. Thank you.
I would just like to, I'm just so excited to welcome our teams and staff back. It's been a long summer, and it's going to be a wonderful and exciting new year. And we can't wait to see everybody next week. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 12, Good and Welfare. A, condolences to the Free Slaven family on the passing of Harry Free Slaven, former school district athletic director and coach. B, congratulations to Sarah Peronan family on the arrival of her daughter Evelyn "Evy" Rose Peron on August 19th, 2021. And C, congratulations to Valerie Prazmo and family on the arrival of her son Luke Anthony Prazmo on August 24th, 2021. Item number 13, Public Comments. Please be reminded that the meeting is livestreamed and being recorded. I encourage residents to contact the Board at boardofeducation@ERSD.org and to contact your child's teacher or appropriate administrator with any concerns. At this time, if you have a comment, please complete the form prior to speaking down here at the table.
No emails.
If you would come and take a form. If you would like to speak, there are forms down there.
Come get a form?
Mrs. O'Valley, you want to speak? Thank you so much.
Can everybody hear me? All right. Hello, everybody. I hope everybody had a good summer. I don't really have a question. I just have a comment. You know, I've been in this community. I've lived here 51 years. So I want to speak as a parent today of a child who is immune-compromised. And just moving forward, you know, I'm very relieved that there was a mask mandate. And of course, you are all entitled to your opinion. And I just want to make a comment that I, I really hope that the Board, moving forward, in whatever mandate, how it changes or evolves, that you think of every student in this district. My daughter is 17. She's going into her senior year this year. And I know it's going to look very different than anything she was really expecting. And, you know, I just want to keep her safe, and I know all of you do also. So I'm just going to ask that as things change, and I know that they may, the barriers and the, you know, the cleaning and sanitizing and the social distancing and the masks, they kept her safe last year. You know, she didn't get COVID, which is great because I honestly don't think she would fight it off. So I'm going to ask you, moving forward, keep those students and those kids in mind. And again, I respect all of you. I've been volunteering in this district for a long time. I know it takes a lot to be up there, and I respect that. You know, but at the end of the day, it's about all the students. And that's what I'm going to ask you, to think of my daughter as things change. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Mr. Connors?
I have a question. I couldn't understand, sorry, what you're talking about, the term of diversity. I didn't understand whether it was mission statement or something that you want to make operational. Unfortunately, it's a mask. My bad hearing. There was a lot I couldn't understand. But I was wondering if you could make that clear to me.
Are you referring to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity Policy?
I think that's what you spoke about.
Yes, that wasn't Mr. DiTomaso. That was Mr. McNally spoke about it.
Yeah, it's got to be the policy you referred to. What's your question, sir?
Do you want some more clarification?
I wanted to go back, I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Okay, that's a great question.
I don't know whether it was a statement, admission statement, whether it was an operational thing that can belong in a classroom, or.
That's a great point. I believe we're going to be posting that entire policy, is that correct?
It's posted.
It's fully posted right now?
Yeah, so a policy is a guideline where we have to follow, there's no rules, it's nothing that tells what we have to teach in the classroom. It's more of where we're pushing the district towards as far as equity, inclusivity. Ninety-nine percent of the stuff in the policy, we're already doing. We're just, this is something that boards are doing around the country now, they're just putting it into a policy. We have policies on all sorts of things, and this is just a way to put it on paper, and it's, it's not a governing thing, it's not, this is what we're learning, it's, it's more of guidelines as to what we'd like to see go on in the district, and if anybody else would like to jump in.
Yeah.
There's no specific curriculum that's tied to this policy itself, and probably the best suggestion I could give to you, when you have time now, it's on the website. Take it at your leisure, read the whole policy, because it's all encompassing of everything that goes on in the schools, all right? And then, you know, any questions, we'll gladly answer them. But it is quite lengthy also. Yes.
But it's basically, we intend everyone.
Yes, it's guidance, it's guidance to make sure that all students.
Sir, that's 100% correct. All students.
And everyone, absolutely.
You'll see that in the policy. You got it, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I can read one line from it, that kind of, "We're committed to addressing equality and health of each and every student to be equitable, to equitably access learning opportunities in school to enable them to all thrive and build a better society." It's about providing opportunity for all students.
That's correct.
Any questions?
No, no email.
Okay. Item number 14, Board Member Comments. Anybody like to?
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like, would like to thank Jackie and Mr. Daly. We had the opportunity to tour the, all the buildings today, and honestly, I've never seen them look better. The grounds look great, even with all the projects going on, the classrooms look great. So, you know, the custodial staff doesn't get a lot of kudos, they're behind the scenes, but guys and girls, thank you, and I just appreciate it, and, you know, welcome everybody back to a happy and good school year. So thank you.
Shall I go? I'd like to second what Joe said, primarily regarding Mr. Daly and Mr. Creo. An amazing job, you, the perception of our district as you drive past one of the schools, it's, it makes me proud. It really, really does. So hats off to you, amazing job. I want to wish all of our students, the teachers, the administrators, and all staff a great school year. To the parents of our district, we're doing everything we can to get our kids back to normal as quickly and safely, safely as possible. So a little quote, "Character is revealed when pressure is applied." Thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's comments, and whoever came to state how you feel and what's important to you, and I promise you, it hits us in the heart and in the brain, and we really do appreciate it.
I'd like to also, you know, go on the fact of the grounds, buildings and grounds, but it really came to light tonight how hard the central administration has worked along with the Board of Education, seeing two things that were huge price tags. And one is the bulkhead, okay, which saved the district over $1 million, and then the second one was the resources in the backup system, okay, in the event that we do lose power. And the immense savings that also came to the district at that time. It's through the hard work that goes, it's the grunt work, we call it, you know, all year long, keeping ahead and watching for things that are out there and then making application for them. So thank you all for, for having that, okay? And, and to the board members themselves for backing those up, you know, as they move through and constantly looking at that as we went through for the whole bond issue and saving the taxpayers millions of dollars here in East Rockaway. That's the first one. The second one is that I want to thank Superintendent Ruiz for putting together the reentry plan along with the administrators from all the buildings that are here tonight and also not here. We want to, again, it's everybody who's ready to hit the ground running and the curveball thrown at the last second. And thank goodness that the flexibility is here, that we're able to look past things that we, you know, sort of were, were ready to do, and now we got to make a little pivot turn here. But I believe that that pivot turn will be short, and we'll move through as we have done in the past. Mr. Free Slaven, I just can't say enough about the man who at one time had the keys to the gymnasiums of East Rockaway schools and what he meant to the students and, and staff members and coaches of the past year. His, his funeral was a testament to who he was at East Rockaway, what he did for us during the pioneer years, and now, you know, as, as we move into this new phase in the back, you know, I thought we would have an opportunity to, to share that, but I'm sure he'll watch it from above. And my last one, Jim Lores, I want to put this on to say thank you, because you always give us some nice gifts, and we always appreciate them, and I will wear it every sunny day to cover my bald head. Thank you, Jim.
I second everything you guys said. Mr. Daly, Mr. Creo, thank you for bringing us on the tour today, and everything looked great, so thank you for that. I want to welcome back all of the students and the teachers. Students are in good hands because the teachers here in East Rockaway and the administrators do such a fabulous job, and I know despite everything that's going on, the students will have a great environment to learn in, and that's because of the teachers and the administrators. So thank you. And I just wanted to bring up, when I spoke earlier, I was conflicted because I know as a teacher how the masks hinder learning, and Mr. Connors, you brought that out when you said, "I'm sorry with, with the mask, I, I can't hear it." And that's exactly the point I was trying to make, I've seen it so many times, but in the end, Mrs. Del Valle, we knew that safety was more important. So it, it's a dilemma, but we want to make sure we do the right thing. So that, both of those brought out exactly what I was trying to say. So thank you.
Well, you guys said pretty much everything I was going to. Thank you very much, Jimmy, for the help and for driving us today on the building walkthroughs. Thank you, Mr. Daly and Ms. Creo. It's very exciting seeing the improvements in the bond projects coming to fruition. I'm going to keep this brief by wishing all students and staff the best of luck as they begin a new academic school year. To quote Malala Yousafzai, the author of the book I Am Malala, read by our middle and high school students this summer, "One child, one teacher, one book, and one pen can change the world." I look forward to seeing how the young people in this district, being big, achieve their personal goals and make every moment of this school year shine. Thank you. Okay, item number 15. Adjournments, this concludes tonight's Board of Education meeting at 8:48. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McNally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kilgus. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. That's what I was trying to do. Everybody. Thank you. That's what I was trying to do.